Meeting to order. Resolution one three two. Meeting called order by Larry Maholchek at six P M. Attendees Larry Maholchek Reeve, Gary Bartel Deputy Reeve, Derek Bartel Counselor, Counselor Jensen and Counselor Reader, absent with notice. Leanne Hutman Counselor is meeting with us virtually. Gail Wagner Counselor present. Trevor Woke and Colin Eisner Foreman. Need a mover and a seconder. Gary and seconded by Gail. All in favor? Carried. Approval of agenda. Any additions or deletions to it? Hearing none, I'll read the resolution one three three. Approval of agenda. Be it resolved that the meeting agenda for regular council meeting of April first, two thousand twenty five be accepted as presented. Mover and a seconder. Derek seconded by. Gary, sorry, Leanne on favor? Carried. Approval of previous minutes. No questions on the minutes. I'll read the resolution one three four. Be it resolved that the meeting minutes of the regular meeting of council on March eighteenth, two thousand twenty five be accepted as presented. Mover and a seconder. Derek seconded by. Gail, all in favor? Carried. Number five protective services. Five point one point one mutual aid fire protection agreement.
This is the meeting we had with members in Swan River.
The amendments were on.
Three point zero four is amended, I see.
Yes, three point zero four and also the addition of nine. Of eleven point zero six.
That's correct. So yeah, those who use that word, you've read the agreement, everybody. Three point zero four. Five members in attendance on the scene of the incident was sixty minutes from the time of the initial department page from nine one one communication center. So we met with them and that was an agreed with them. They will sign their resolutions after we sign ours.
Correct.
And it seems reasonable, like that's a reasonable time to deal with in members. Because we have like quite a membership in Swan and in Bozeman some too, so I don't see any problem with it. So just want to speak a little bit with Larry. Do you want to add anything?
Um, nope.
Okay.
Everything's good.
Okay.
Leanne?
Yeah, no, I'm happy with the changes.
Derek, Gail? Okay, I'll read resolution one three five. Be it resolved that the fire protection mutual aid agreement be accepted and approved as presented. Further be it resolved that the Council of Municipal Minnetonahus Bozeman rescind resolution two five one, two thousand twenty four, which was previously approved by council on July sixteenth, two thousand twenty four. Mover and a seconder. Gary seconded by. Derek? All in favor? Carried. Five point two, two thousand twenty five emergency plan.
So this is the emergency plan that the the emergency management office of the municipal government requires councils as well as cities to update and then approve the updated plan on an annual basis. We brought this forward a couple times now to council. Basically, our administrative staff have done significant work updating everything in this plan. As far as we can tell, we think we've got all the updates covered. I've surveyed or put an email to council Monday last week to acquire if any additional changes. Are there any changes that council wishes to make? You got a few? Okay. Okay, and is it in part one, two, or three?
Part three.
Part three?
Oh, yeah.
So what changes would you like?
On page five, or page twelve.
Page twelve.
One twenty six or not sure which one. You go by the big one or the little one?
I'll go by twelve because I don't have the higher number.
On one point six, it should say Towne of Swan River, not RM Swan River.
Okay.
I don't know if it makes a difference, but just in case it does.
RM Swan River. Okay, so one point six.
What does it say?
One point six, it says RM Swan River.
Would be.
On twelve.
Page twelve.
On the third part.
To Towne of Swan River? Okay.
Because you have an answer for me.
Yep.
Page nineteen.
Page nineteen.
Under tow trucks. Windsor still have a tow truck anymore.
So tow trucks, I've got quick lift. So Windsor Shell Service?
Yeah, they don't have a tow truck anymore.
So we should be deleting Windsor Cell Service? Okay. Okay.
And page twenty.
Page twenty?
Just under like under plumbing and welding and stuff. There's other electricians. There's other people now in the valley that opened businesses. I don't know if you want all those or we should have them or?
It's up to council. I'm thinking since you're making changes, we probably won't be approving this today through a resolution because you'll want to have it updated first. So it sounds like we'd be tabling this again. If you.
It's like, it doesn't matter to me. I just thought I'd point out that there's like two more welders, another plumber and another electrician that.
Okay.
Are all new in.
Can you email me who those two more welders are? And then you said one more electrician?
Yeah. And then one more plumber.
Yeah, and we want to support those businesses too, so.
And under Swan River Scrap Metal, under the welding and cutting.
So Swan River, is that the same page?
Yeah. Sorry, page twenty.
Yeah, page twenty, okay.
Um, it should say Swan River Steel and Mechanical. He doesn't go by, he doesn't do the scrap metal anymore.
Okay, so I'm just looking for that here.
It says Swan River Scrap.
Is that?
Brett Church. Under welding and cutting.
Welding and cutting, okay.
Has the business name changed?
Yeah, yeah, he only changed it.
Okay.
Couple years ago, I think.
So I've got Dan Grazer, Brett Church. Okay, so it's not.
Brett, yeah, Brett Church is the one to change.
Yeah.
To Swan River Steel and Mechanical.
So Swan River, what's the name?
Steel.
Steel and mechanical?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make that change. Okay, right, any other changes?
Page twenty four.
Page twenty four.
Brett Church no longer has a United Church. I think that was in the thing.
Okay, Birch River. Page. So Birch River Saint?
No, United Church.
United Church.
Okay.
So relative to the Roman Catholic Church, is that higher or lower? I'm just trying to find it.
Just above.
Just above? Okay, Birch River United, okay, gotcha.
Last one. I'll just review.
Yeah.
Page thirty one.
Page thirty one.
Red apple, just to get your cell phone number. Or in the. Mobile source?
Oh, yeah, right, okay.
Just his mobile number, two oh four.
Two zero four.
Two eight one.
Two eight one.
Zero five zero one.
Zero five zero one.
Yeah. I think that was only Monkey and I don't know if it was in there.
All right. Do any other council members have any changes that they want to make?
Not anything that I knew that was different, but good you picked up on that, Gail.
I just had a question for the Bozeman United Church on page twenty four.
Page twenty four.
Kind of around the same area that Gail was there, but Ken Stanland.
Yeah, I was wondering if they saw that.
Like, I thought that was Kathy Highmore when she'd be the reverend there.
Go for contact name, eh?
Yeah, I don't think Ken would be.
So is.
Yeah, with.
Is Ken out or is Ken plus a new person?
I don't think Ken ever was, or me.
No, I think that's just wrong information. It might have been, yeah, incorrect to start with.
Yeah, because that's Kathy's house number is under the business number.
Yeah, so Kathy Highmore is what we want to put there for contact.
So C A T H Y?
K A.
K A.
Yeah, K A.
How you spell that last name?
H I G H M O O R.
So H I G H M O R?
M O O R.
Oh, O R, okay, got it, okay.
And I'll give you her cell number because.
Sure.
Actually, I'll just show it instead of saying it out loud.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Wonderful. And I think that was the only one that I noticed under the one I knew was. I don't think there was any other ones.
The guy?
Yeah, because I think, oh, sorry.
No, I'm just going to say the guy from the Bozeman will tell his name is spelt wrong, but is that the issue or no?
Let's fix it. What page is that on?
On the twenty nine.
Twenty nine, okay.
His name is Chin Tan, not Fan.
Fan, okay, so.
It should be a T.
Yeah.
And then it ends with an R and not an L.
Last name?
And I think it's all one word.
Yeah.
Is that, is that right? Like that's the.
Chin Tan is his name, yes.
Chin Tan Carmo, yeah.
So not C H I N, it is instead?
It's C H I N T A N.
C H I N T A N?
That's the first name?
Yeah, and then P A R M A R.
P A R M A R.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then what we're doing, Chen's Restaurant, Swan River Chen's?
Yeah.
Um, the two that are listed there, they don't speak any English, so you probably have to put Lisa Chin down there for, as a contact.
So Swan River Chen?
Chen's, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find him on the list here.
Just go down a little bit, right under something.
We build subway, we build subway church. And had the name Lisa?
Lisa Chen, yeah.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, her parents don't speak any English.
So her name is Lisa Chen, L I S A Chen?
Yeah.
And is that phone number still right?
That would be the restaurant, I'm assuming, so probably.
Perfect. So what, you wouldn't be, just put her down as manager or just leave a blank or?
Or I.
Owner, probably.
Probably an owner.
Owner, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any other ones?
Well, did you?
Don't think, um, under Katers, I don't think Julie Katers anymore.
What page is that on?
Just right at the bottom there, just right twenty nine, then thirty, right at the top of there.
Okay.
I don't think Julie does any, yeah, she doesn't do any key hearing anymore.
Okay.
The rest of them, I don't know, no for sure.
Okay, yeah.
No Frills here is just, this is the name of the store.
Okay.
Dylan and Galen's No Frills. I don't know their last names, but.
Okay.
Just if there was no manager, nothing listed there for No Frills.
Okay, so let's go back. So No Frills. So is it No Frills with the name on it or just No Frills Grocery?
It's just No Frills and then it says Dylan and Galen's No.
Yeah, that's the contact people, okay.
And that's how the receipts are printed off too, is.
Galen's, so add their names to the business name as well?
Well, I don't know, we're just a contact even, just have a name.
And they are the, whenever I've contacted them before, they've always been the main contact.
Yeah, they are the franchise owners.
Yeah. Okay, good.
And I know there's probably some changes that Larry might know of maybe better than me, but the Birch River Riding Club, I don't think Wilma Colbert should be on there anymore.
That's correct.
Yeah. And Viola Beals maybe is not an up to date name either.
So what page is that on?
Uh, thirty two.
Thirty two, okay, going down there.
Leanne, would you know, is it still Amy Hawke that you contacted for the Bozeman skating?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, uh, she's the president now. And the Bozeman Lions Club, we could probably add in Keith in there for he's the president, I believe. Keith Beerman.
So just go back to the Birch River Riding Club. You're saying remove Viola and we're, remove Wilma?
Yeah. And I don't know the names, so just to take them out totally. Not sure.
Okay.
Who's in charge of the Birch River Riding Club now?
Okay, we can just take the contacts out and just leave.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll find like a main number if we can, like they probably have a website or something in the phone book.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
And then Bozeman Lions Club at the top of that page, we could put Keith Beerman down.
What page was that on?
Same one.
Same one, three or two.
Page one, because at the top, yeah.
Yep. So the Bozeman Legion, we put down, I brought the row. Who's the person we're adding?
Oh, shoot, I made a mistake. That was Bozeman Lions.
Lions?
Yeah. Oh, just, whose name am I adding?
Keith Beerman.
Keith Beerman.
So K E I T H, how you spell his last name?
K E. H R.
Yeah.
F A M.
And do you have a phone number for you?
I can text it to you.
Sure, okay, yeah, that's what I had.
Actually, Larry probably has it too.
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Okay, probably be easier just because he's right there, but.
Yeah.
Okay. So just write it down or if you have off the top of your head or?
Not off the top of my head normally, I don't look, so.
We'll get, we'll.
We'll come back to it.
Yeah, you bet.
Page twenty five. Solid Rock Church.
Oh, uh, yes, please.
It's easy to write down that.
Yeah, exactly, probably, but just a while. Okay, so.
What were you talking about, Ken?
Page twenty five. The Solid Rock Church. The contact name, I'm assuming would be Cam Hart.
I didn't say, sure. No, sorry, God.
Yeah, it is, isn't it?
Excellent, thank you. Okay, so where are we at?
Page twenty five.
Twenty five. Okay.
Um, the Solid Rock Community Church. I'm assuming that the contact name would be Cam Hart. He's the pastor there.
Okay. Let me just find it here.
It's the second one from the top on my page.
Okay, what one is? Okay, you said page twenty five?
Yeah.
Okay, Swan River, oh, Swan River Solid Rock, okay, yeah, okay. So we're saying add whose name again?
Cam Hart.
Cam, C A M Hart, H A R T.
Yeah.
And is that phone number?
Um, that I don't know, I just know that he's the.
Does anybody know his phone number?
I don't.
I don't think so.
Okay, all right, I'll change the contact name. I think the phone number is good because we've actually already called that number and somebody picked up as a church. That's why that number is still there, so, okay.
January number one, initials Brett Jursak uses for this welding business.
Send J Jursak Custom Fabrication, isn't it?
Yeah, J F R, is it?
J F R.
J F R, okay, I couldn't remember, it was Jason.
Thank you. So what page is that on?
It's okay, and that's the ones I'm going to write out for you, the welding.
Oh, yes, yes, the extra ones, yeah, okay, perfect. Any other changes?
I think that was all I had marked up.
Can we do the resolution as amended or do we table it?
Uh, no, there's too many amendments to list the resolution. I think table it, we'll bring it back. But these are good updates, I think we'll be, bring these all back as updated, we'll be done. It'll be pretty straightforward then.
I've got a different number for that Solid Rock Church.
Oh.
When I go to the website?
Okay, so Solid Rock Community Church, what phone number do you have?
Swan River, I got seven three four.
Four.
Ninety four twenty five.
Ninety four twenty five, okay. Solid Rock.
This is the one that?
Oh, yeah. Well, this is home number, so if somebody, it's not business number, because they've got home business and mobile. So I'll add this as business. So we'll keep the original one and we'll just add this in the business column. Perfect.
Okay, resolution one three six will be tabled. We'll move to number six, Public Works and Utilities, six point one subdivision application.
So this subdivision application came in. It requires a council review and approval. All the information is everything that was provided by the applicant as well as the municipal government, including subdivision details, evaluation form, location plot, surface maps, and the title search as well.
It's a ten acre subdivision.
Correct.
Yeah, so that meets. Interior. There we are. Any other questions regarding the subdivision? Leanne, Gail, or Derek?
Nope.
All right. I'll read the resolution one three seven. Be it resolved that municipality Minnetonahus Bozeman approved the application for subdivision of part of the property southeast corridor, section thirty four, thirty six, twenty five west, as described in the Ministry of Municipal and Northern Affairs file four one four nine dash two five dash seven eight five four. Applicant filed two four two two zero dash two zero two and its supporting documents. Mover and a seconder. Gary seconded by. Derek, all in favor? Carried. Number seven, finance. Seven point one point one. Payment of accounts payable. Are there any questions regarding the payables? Not for me. Derek? Leanne or Gail?
No, I just have a question when I see the name Conrad's though. Have we got everything for the Bozeman, is that done now for the Bozeman Skating Rink?
Uh, for the extinguishers, Leanne?
Yeah, like everything?
Yep.
Came in, got everything, okay, good.
I think Kent delivered it down there a month ago type thing.
Yeah.
We were waiting for the last two special extinguishers, one for the kitchen and maybe the other one for the Zamboli room. So it's all, everything they needed is there.
Okay, should be complete, thanks.
Yep. I'll read resolution one three eight. Be it resolved that accounts payable checks one three eight four four to one three eight eight six in amount of sixty nine thousand ninety nine dollars and twenty one cents be accepted and approved as presented. Mover and a seconder? Derek?
Yep.
And Leanne, all in favor? Carried. Seven point one point two payment of payroll, pay period zero six, March first to the fourteenth. Any questions regarding the payroll? Hearing none, I'll read resolution one three nine. Be it resolved that the payroll pay period zero six, two thousand twenty five, for the period from March first to the fourteenth, two thousand twenty five, and in amount of twenty five thousand one hundred and eighty six dollars and sixty nine cents be accepted as presented and approved for payment. Mover and a seconder, Gary seconded by. Gail, all in favor? Carried. Seven point one point three. Payment of council payroll. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll read resolution one four zero. Be it resolved that the council payroll pay period zero three, two thousand twenty. Hearing none, or read resolution one-four-zero, be it resolved that the council payroll pay period zero-three, two thousand twenty-five, March first to the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, in the amount of eight thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars, twenty-eight cents be accepted as presented and approved for payment, mover and a seconder, Derek, seconded by, Gary, all in favor, carried. Seven-point-two. Co-op check voucher one-three-seven-three-two.
Uh, this is, um, information item was, uh, the result of a takeaway from council from the last meeting regarding the, uh, voucher on, for two thousand fourteen, that was approved by council on February two thousand eighteen, uh, it's fairly comprehensive in what it covers, and basically breaks down the questions, and provides information to those questions for what was being asked during the meeting, um, are there any questions?
If I went through it, and I understand how it all, um, transpired, I guess, so.
Yeah, basically cleanup, that's what it was.
That's right.
Twenty-three, twenty-four cleanup.
Any more questions before we read the resolution? Hearing none, or read resolution one-four-one, be it resolved that the check voucher one-three-seven-three-two Swan Valley Consumers Co-op, February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, information item be accepted as presented, mover and a seconder, Gary, seconded by, Derek, all in favor, carried. Seven-point-three, net cumulative deficit recovery.
Uh, this is a follow-up to, um, a prior meeting resolution that we had, uh, brought forward to cover the hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-six-dollar deficit that resulted from the two thousand twenty-two financial statements, uh, during the approval process, and that letter has gone to the Minister of Municipal Relations and Northern Affairs for approval, uh, the feedback from the, uh, advisors that we worked with in preparing that letter, is that, the requirement is that you don't just cover the year that you finished, uh, there was also cumulative carryforward from prior fiscal years that has to be covered as well, so, in the discussion there, um, we can't cover the total amount outstanding, which is, uh, quite significant, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars, that would be a relatively high, uh, increased treadmill rate, and to the funding we have to get through our mill rate levy to cover it, so, per the legislation, uh, we, this resolution will enable us to put a letter forward requesting approval from the minister to take the remainder, uh, three-seventy-nine, three-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand nine seventy-eight, uh, less the previously approved by council, hundred-and-sixty-one-three-six that we incurred two thousand twenty-two, i.e., take that difference of, uh, two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand five hundred and ninety-two, and basically request approval to cover it over the fiscal years of two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven, and two thousand twenty-eight, uh, it makes it more affordable, it's down to a, um, if you were to just average it evenly across the three years, seventy-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars per year. The hope is, though, that for two thousand twenty-four, the year being finished, we will have some surplus that we can then also apply towards this, which will make the repayment of that amount easier, because we can use that surplus to offset the deficit, uh, from the years prior to two thousand twenty-two, so at this stage, uh, I can't issue the letter without a resolution from council, uh, enabling me to provide the letter, once the letter is done, I'll send it to the advisors, it'll go up to the minister, it takes about a month, they say, uh, that's just how, how fast that process works, so at this stage, what you're approving is that, uh, that you're agreeing with the strategy, uh, to take the remaining, uh, the remaining two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand five ninety-two of accumulated deficit, and just making a commitment that will cover it over two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight.
Yeah, seems like it's, uh, more workable that way, for sure.
Derek?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Gail? Leanne? Any questions?
Yep.
No, I'm good.
And hearing none, or read resolution one-four-two. Whereas the council municipality Minnetonka's Bozeman acknowledges accumulative net general operating fund deficit of three hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars as of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and whereas the fiscal two thousand twenty-two operating fund deficit was primarily the result of transportation service expenses exceeding budget by four hundred thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars due to significant road flooding events, and whereas prior to two thousand twenty-two, operating fund deficits were primarily the result of transportation services expenses exceeding budget, and whereas the council municipality Minnetonka's Bozeman has approved two thousand twenty-five financial plan funding to recover one hundred and sixty-one thousand three hundred and eighty-six dollars of the accumulative net general operating fund deficit, therefore, be it resolved that the council Minnetonka's Bozeman requests Minister of Municipal and Northern Relations' approval to recover two hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars of the December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two net cumulative general operating fund deficit of three hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars over two, um, two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven, and two thousand twenty-eight, utilizing a recovery rate of seventy-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars per year. Mover and a seconder. Derek, seconded by. Gail, all in favor, carried.
Yeah.
Seven-point-four, library mill rate levy.
Um, this is, uh, annual, uh, mill rate levy you get from the library, that basically council approves, and then incorporates into its, uh, two thousand and twenty-five, or its, the financial plan of that year, uh, this number has already been incorporated into the updated, uh, two thousand twenty-five, we got this number in, we've just simply tweaked it to adjust, reflect the amount, um, basically, we just raised the money that's required, uh, for their, their invoices to us, and at this stage, they are requesting a levy of ten dollars and eighty-three cents per capita, uh, at this stage, it is increased relative to the nine dollars and twenty-four that they had last year, and it represents a dollar fifty-nine, uh, per capita increase, or a seventeen-point-two percent increase, it sounds relatively high, but they've got, uh, uh, wages that have to be caught up, similar to what we did up with our employees earlier on, as well as some other needed expenditures, so at this stage, uh, they're requesting our approval through resolution, and then we send the resolution to them, that we are going to be paying the invoices.
And you said this was, eh, pretty much, uh, built into the financial plan earlier, already?
Uh, we had a lower rate previously, but I went back in once I got this, and I just bumped it.
And bumped.
Yeah, just bumped into this, yeah, because we really, we don't have really, uh.
There's not a choice, really.
Yeah, we've got to cover their budget, we're, we're one of the people contributing, and it's all per capita, per the legislation.
Twenty-five hundred and twenty-three dollars, yeah.
Yeah, a small increase, relatively the big picture.
We can understand that, because dealing with the same stuff. I'm good with it. Excuse me.
Any other questions on the mill rate levy? Hearing none, or read resolution one-four-three, be it resolved that the two thousand twenty-five library mill rate levy approval item be accepted and approved as presented, mover and a seconder, Gary, seconded by.
Yep.
Leanne, all in favor, carried. Uh, nothing on administration, number nine, bylaws and policies.
Could we, um, get back to this after the in-camera one, Larry?
Mm-hmm.
Would that be possible?
Uh, we.
Or?
Yeah, we can, it's, uh, there's no, in the gallery, so it's not like the, we're not, we're not to wait for us to come back to hear the next, the last resolution.
Right, I just wanted some, maybe a little discussion.
Sure, yeah.
In camera on this first.
Okay.
We can do that. Are there any announcements?
Yeah, if I can talk, Larry, I will. Yeah, uh, a couple watershed meetings last week and the week before, just the, uh, general watershed meeting that goes over the, uh, monthly happenings, and, uh, a special one, we're looking to hire a, uh, a full-time tech that's gonna help Eddie, so that's in the process now, so, that involved a special meeting, um, another, uh, one this week, till we get the candidates narrowed down. Projects, you guys, two million to spend this year, anything anybody can think of, bring it forth, uh, you never know, it could be covered, so, if you're hearing anything out there, just, uh, yeah, give it to Eddie, or myself, or Larry, or you could even go and see anybody, or see Eddie or Linnea at the board there, bring it forward to if a counselor has, or call, it doesn't matter who, so, we're looking for projects, and that's about all I have, uh, or had, in the last, uh, last couple weeks.
Okay, Gary, Derek?
Uh, I didn't have any meetings.
Uh, Gail?
Still trying to get the vet board meeting nailed down, but it seems like somebody's always backing up, so it's, I think the end of April now, or something around there, I'm not quite sure yet.
Trevor?
Nope.
And I have nothing, I guess. So, seeing that, then we'll move into camera. Number eleven. Read the resolution one-four-five, be it resolved that pursuant to section one-five-two-three of municipal act, despite subsections one and two, council shall meet as a committee of the whole to close a meeting and continue discussion in camera regarding employee land legal and matter that is in its preliminary stages and respecting which discussion in public would prejudice the municipality Minnetonka's Bozeman's ability to carry out its activities or negotiations, pursuant to section eighty-three-one-D, council members shall keep in confidence a matter discussed at a meeting closed to the public under section one-five-two-three, until a matter discussed at a meeting conduct, conducted in public, pursuant to section ninety-four-one-H, a council member becomes disqualified for breaching a requirement of confidentiality under clause eighty-three-one-D. Uh, we moved into that, what's the time?
Six forty-two? Six forty-two.
Six forty-two. And the ten Ds that aren't present is Clint Jensen and Ken Reader, absent with notice. Uh, mover and a seconder for that, please, Gary, seconded by, Derek, all in favor, carried.
Yeah.
Resolution one-four-six, be it resolved that pursuant to section one-five-two-four of municipal act, this meeting shall be reopened to the public, mover and a seconder, please, Derek, seconded by, Gail, all in favor, carried.
At eight forty-one, Larry.
At eight forty-one.
Yeah.
And going back to the agenda, nine-point-one, policy two thousand twenty-five-zero-two, vacation leaves, uh, read the resolution one-four-four, be it resolved that the policy two thousand twenty-five dash zero-two, vacation leaves be accepted and approved as presented, mover and a seconder, Gary, seconded by.
Yep.
Leanne, all in favor, carried. And a resolution to adjourn, be it reso.
That's, my apologies, uh, you do, that's, no, you're right, one-four-seven's next, my apologies.
Okay, one-four, one-four-seven.
Yeah, one-four-seven, we've already done the in-camera part, my apologies.
Yes.
Yep.
Resolution to adjourn the meeting, resolution one-four-seven, be it resolved that this regular meeting of council be adjourned at time?
Eight four-two. Eight four-two.
Eight forty-two, mover and a seconder.
Yeah.
Gail, seconded by Leanne, all in favor?
Yeah.
Carried. Meeting adjourned.